Good morning. It's 9:00 AM on July 19, 2021. This is Wigan Beach Unified School District Special School Board Meeting. Board Policy Workshop is called Order. Central Virtual Number One on the Agenda is procedural note to make public comment. In order to provide enough time for board members to read written public testimony, the forum closed Sunday, July 18, 5:00 PM. There were no public comments. Victoria Keith is called role to stop this forum.
Member Perry?
Here.
Member Vickers?
Here.
Clerk Osborne?
Here.
President Normandin?
Here.
And Member Kelly is not able to attend.
We have one. Thank you, Victoria. We can now move to 3B, the Pledge of Allegiance Led by Jan this morning.
Okay, is there? I do have a small flag. Stand, please. And again, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jan. This moves to 3C. Jason, are there any changes on the agenda?
No changes.
Okay, can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
No move.
Second. Kelly. Victoria, can you please conduct a roll call?
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
Clerk Osborne?
Yes.
President Normandin?
Yes, the motion carries 401?
Correct.
No, yeah, 401. We're now moving, we're now on item 4A. Before I open for public comment, I'm just going to explain real quick. Support working and accomplished states about set our intentions and support our stakeholders' understanding in an informal policy meeting. Over the next two and a half hours, the board will review policies. And the zeros, 1,000 and 2,000 series of board policies. Some of the policies are brought forward because they have different additions or revisions made by state and federal law, or changes occurred internally that impact policy. Some of the policies are new, and the board needs to determine if the policy should be brought forward for adoption. Some of the policies are submitted for deletion. Within each series, we have policies that are current. There's no need for change. However, for this comprehensive view of each series, a board member might have a common or question on a policy that's current. In addition, reviewing them in this manner allows us all to understand how these living documents work together to govern the district full time. We only have authority to govern when we are seated. When we're seated on average hours or less a month, the policies are really important to the district. The board is conducting this meeting in coordination with executive cabinet members. And Attorney Mark, proceed. We have an established process, our norm, to review, revise, adopt, or entire policies and bylaws. As living documents, every change is documented from their original adoption by passports, updates, additions, deletions. And we are keeping, we are the current keepers of this dynamic documents. Step one, part A of the process, is the hours of prep everyone on this panel conducted before this meeting as our first investment in understanding. And step 2B is this, step 1B is this meeting. We're working towards unity and understanding. We're not taking any action today. But in our unity of understanding, we can suggest edits of the language that can, we consider applying before we take action in a future meeting. Step 2 is the first reading as an information item at a regular scheduled board meeting. As we prepare for this meeting, board members can submit requests ahead of the meeting to suggest edits that can be discussed by all members at the meeting. Public may provide testimony and observe. Our norm is action typically does not happen at this step, but legally it can and occasionally it has. The second reading is when the policies are agendized as a final action item at a regular board meeting. This is typically when we take action to move forward with a new or changed language of the policies, deleted policies, etc. On rare occasion, since I've been on the board, we both waved a second reading, taking action the first reading, and the board is also required additional readings of our reading for the policy. And lastly, most importantly, we bring these policies back multiple times. The board can continue its reflection on the changes, shape the policies to best reflect our community when lawmakers have allowed that. And most importantly, above all, we want to provide all stakeholders with multiple occasions to observe and comment, since this is the foundation of public education. Speaking of that, Victoria, is there anyone wishing to speak? This morning?
There are no hands raised.
Okay, thank you, Victoria. With that, we're keeping for D, I know Jan just did this. So since we only have four minutes per policy, and must be mindful of each other and the time to get through all the 33 policies. Victoria'll announce when we're at four minutes after each policy opens, so we balance our time. And if needed, we can come back to it at the end. Can everyone look at their, just, and we'll just do this real quick together. Can everyone look at their raised hand feature on Zoom and just press it? It's on the bottom right. It's like what I'll look for. Awesome. And D, do you see it? Yeah, okay. And then you can release it. And it just says lower hand. Awesome. And then if everyone on their mute, if everyone can press unmute and then just hit the spacebar and just say like, "Good morning." You guys see where if you put on mute, spacebar, you could say, "Good morning."
Are you testing for sound?
Carol, you're muted.
Yeah, of course. So if we all stay muted with our hands, our Zoom hands lowered, then it'll be easy to move through these rapidly enough, right? And then if you want to say something, raise your hand and unmute. You can do that by hitting either your spacebar or you could do that by unmuting it like we have. Okay. And then I'll look for everybody. And so between Victoria and I, hopefully we'll catch everyone before we move on. And at four minutes, we'll move on and come back at the end. And then after you raise your hand, taken off your mute and you've been called on, just put your mute back on and lower your hand and wait for the answer and let everyone get through a round of questions. And then just, we'll just keep doing that. Everyone has a chance. And with that, we'll open with the zeros series, which is philosophy goals, objectives, and comprehensive plans, starting with BP 0100 Philosophy. Before you start that timer. If the policy is current or being deleted up to save time, I'm just going to mention that. Otherwise, I'm going to pass it on to Jason right before talk. So with BP 0100 Philosophy, it's current policy and there's no recommended changes. But if you have a question, just please raise your hand. Your Zoom hand. And unmute. And I didn't see anything. So the next one is BP 200, Goals for the District. Again, current. Raise your hand or unmute. And then BP 410, Non-Discrimination District Programs and Activities. This is just simply requires a change because we have a change in employees' names. And that's all this is. And so we do bring it back with Mike's informations to Elise's information. Let's tell you, go ahead.
I just had a question, a point of clarification. For what percentage of our student population speaks Spanish? Since there's a reference in there.
I'll be happy to provide the most recent information and the weekly update, but it is far less than 15%.
Okay, exactly. That was all. All righty, thank you.
So the next one is BP 415. Yes. Oh, sorry, yes, Jane.
Do we need to have Mr. Conlin's name in it? Or could we have it say Deputy Superintendent to make that change? There's older policies where we had no name, just the position. And then we did have Lisa's name. I just didn't know if it would be, if it's, if we need to have the name or not.
That is a question for Mark or Jay, Mark or Jason. I also was thinking we could have something that just says Human Resources or something like that, something that, you know, it would go to that position, no matter who's in the position. For the email address, but. Looking.
And it.
Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, and the law doesn't dictate it one way or the other, but given the importance in the law of identifying certain positions, Title IX Coordinator as such, I think it's best to name the person.
Okay, thank you.
And then D, your hands raised, go ahead. You're muted, D, so press the spacebar.
Sorry, it was raised before, but you didn't see it. My question about the Spanish speakers, does less than 15% include all those that even are not, that are English proficient, are not ELL?
I think the question is unrelated to the policy. So if there's a question about the percent of students or percent of, I think this is the last one, I recall. If the question's related regarding the, yeah, thank you for going up. 15% or more, it's ed codage requirement that we translate. So that's the requirement. So is there a question about data? I'm happy to provide that outside of the policy. But the policy education code requires that when you have 15% or more of students, school students speak a primary language other than English that you have to translate.
Okay.
And D, can you lower your hand, Mark, too? Okay, so with that, we're going to move on to equity. I'm sorry about that, I didn't mean to jump the gun. And that's on equity, which is policy 415. And Jason, or yours?
Yeah, one of the, what, this is a CSBA recommended policy, but it also aligns well with the board request to bring forward a policy on equity. So we're bringing it forward for your review as a first, or as a workshop review. But again, it was part of the CSBA, in a more recent conversation on equity, so.
Member Osborne?
I had three suggested changes to make this better align with our work on equity. One was to add, and Victoria, let me know how you want these, given if you want them general or really specific. One was to add a reference to gender or sexual orientation, which I think would probably fit best if you scrolled down into the, ah, this is really hard, okay, on, yeah, in item number one. So disaggregated data, that way we're covering some of the different groups that we focused on in our equity policies. And then my second suggestion was to remove under 2, the "such as" sentence. I didn't think that that applied much to our specific district because it talks about allocating expenditures, maybe for a larger district where things might be uneven across school sites. I just didn't think that that "such as" sentence. I'll give you guys a second to find it. It's in item 2, Analyzing Expenditures. And then my third suggestion was under number nine.
Hold on a second.
Okay, no problem.
Victoria, I think it's down, lower.
No, she's at it. Victoria's, yeah, yeah.
Can you highlight? That's resources?
Yeah, item 2, Analyzing Expenditures and Allocating Financial and Human Resources in a manner that provides all students. It just seemed like this was trying to get things equally allocated across a large district, perhaps. That's how I read it. And I didn't think it added much. I actually thought it made the policy longer than it needed to be. That's just my suggestion. And then my last suggestion was to add mental health outcomes under bullet number nine, where they talk about conducting program evaluations that focus on equity and address the academic and then maybe mental health outcomes, performance of all students on all indicators.
Or, or social, emotional.
Yes.
Learning.
Just so we're not only focused on academic. Those were my only suggested changes. I thought it, aside from those things, it really aligned with what we already have developed.
On the, the number two there, Victoria, if you just highlight it, because part of this is we can, then it's a board before the first reading, we can then just go look at those, right? If we have suggestions, comments about changing them as well, then we can all do that together in action. Makes sense, Kelly?
Yeah, yeah, I'm fine with that. But I wasn't sure how you wanted these. Sometimes we make general suggestions and then Victoria is trying to kind of read our mind. So I was trying to make more specific suggestions to the actual verbiage.
I agree. And the gender part, she can go in before the first reading and put that in there. And then it would just be highlighted or redlined, depending on how she's doing that.
Perfect.
Okay. On number two, they can look at, see whether, you know, we need to have that distinction or not, the ones that are distinction or not. And then Jan, you have a question? You're muted, Jan. Jan, you're still muted. Just press the spacebar. While you're speaking.
Did you get any of that since I say I was muted?
Nope, just heard you just now.
Okay, so you want me to repeat what I said?
Yes, please.
I said I preferred to leave the specificity in number two. And I was agreed with the language on nine of having it social, emotional rather than mental. So, and that's what Victoria put in.
Okay, and we're at four minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you. We can move on and we can come back. This brings us, sorry, now only by my location. Next, a board policy is 0420, School Plan Site Advisory Council. CS, oh, sorry, Jason, and Jason is four.
These are just general updates regarding our school plan and site councils, just changing some language around.
And this reflects to our practice. Jason?
Correct.
Kelly, go ahead.
Did we remove the annual review? Was that intentional or is that just better reflecting our practices?
Annual review of our single, of our school plans, they are annually reviewed.
They are.
Required by, yeah.
Okay.
They're reviewed and approved. Right there. It's hard to, you can see right there at the top of that page where it says the board shall regularly board meetings, review and approve each school's single plan.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
Any other, anyone else? We're ready to move on then. The next one is Board Policy 430. It is Comprehensive Local Plan for Special Education. LBSDA policy is current. There are no recommended changes, but if there are any questions. Right here, Zoom hand. Then the next policy is 440. And this is the District Technology Plan. And Jason, the floor is yours.
All right, we currently don't have a 440. It was just, it's a CSBA policy, potential policy if the board has interest. So we're simply providing it as a draft for your consideration, not necessarily recommending one way or the other. It's just, thought it was important for you to see it as a potential opportunity for a policy.
And Jason, I know we're going to discuss web and technology and stuff down lower in another section. Does this? Is this the more current policy? I know that there's some overlap in some of the other policies we have below. I really like this policy. Oh, and Kelly, go ahead.
Yeah, I think, Carol, maybe to answer your question, there is in the Community Relations, like website, social media, there are technology tools. This plan to me read as an overall plan. Kind of like how we would have a facilities plan or a communications plan. I really liked having this as well. My only suggestions would be the following. Some language about risk was absent from this policy. Second, that technology is a tool to improve or engage parents. That seemed to be missing from it. And if we're going to take the time to write a plan, I thought we should have some language in there about evaluation of the plan. So those were my three comments on it. And Victoria, I can read those back to you if you want.
Carol?
Well, Member Perry, Member Perry had her hand next to her. Go ahead, Member Perry. Or D, go ahead.
I really like Kelly's suggestions. And I also think it's important to have a district technology plan in here.
And Jan, go ahead.
I would leave it up to, I guess, Mike Morrison to address something regarding risk. And if it's not addressed in our other policies in more detail. But this to me is an overview of a plan and that we would not be indicating in policy what would be in the plan, which goes to engaging parents. That would be a component of the plan, is the way I would read it.
Yeah, I think, Jan, like so in the first, very first sentence right there that Victoria has up. So like, we recognize that technology can enhance student achievement by increasing student. This is like all the things technology does from a broad level, like increase student access to information, support teacher effectiveness, facilitate administering assessments. And then I think technology is a really key component of engaging parents as well. So not really defining what we're doing. It's just that, that, that technology is kind of a key aspect of that.
That's true. So I tie that into student effectiveness. I mean, in other words, communicating with parents to me would be a given. And that there would be multiple things that would be in the plan of how that would happen. And that, I just see that as one that fits more within the plan than within the policy. But we can discuss that more at first reading.
Okay, yeah, and then.
And I, I was just going to say, I think that it, the fact that we might, that we've mentioned that it enhances communication as it's, as the big policy, just like we have for our safety plan, of what that does, I think enhancing communication is important.
Yeah, and it doesn't say that in here yet. It just is really focused on enhancing student achievement, which I would agree with Jan, that we all know in improving parent engagement drives student achievement, but that's a leap that you need to make. I just thought there was a couple areas that it could improve in from a stock, kind of a stock plan.
Yeah, I think it enhances communication and transparency. Right, if we even want, well, I don't want to go into that. It enhances communication. Well, on risk, can you speak a little more about what you meant about risk?
Um.
So figure, so we can figure out whether it's in the safety plan or not.
Yeah, and maybe it is covered there. It just seems like we've had a couple. I know Member Perry has brought up a couple items on risk to the district from technology threats. And so again, not outlining what is done in that, but that the plan includes some assessment of risk to the district. There's just, the word risk isn't in there at all. I just, just thought maybe Mike could look at it and consider a place where it fits.
We're at four minutes.
Thank you. I think in the, we could circle back around to this. By the risk thing, I know that we discussed, I brought up that putting that within our safety plan is important. So Victoria, if you can make a note for Mike to look at this and with Jeff and the safety plan, so that you can just make sure risk is covered in the bigger global view.
And then my, my other comment, I know we were at four, was just on evaluation. I think if we're going to write a plan, we have to have a plan to evaluate it. Otherwise, that's a lot of work. Yeah, so, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so next is Board Policy 450, Jason. We'll wait for Victoria to finish picking.
So this is simply just the very bottom. There's an addition to who the plan is shared with.
And we already did that, correct?
Correct.
And then the update of.
President Norman, and if I could just add one thing. Not only do we share it with our local law enforcement, fire department and other first responders, including OC sheriffs, because they have a portion of our district, but they're all actually on the safety committee and participate in the development of the plan as well.
Oh, thank you for that reminder. I don't see any hands or unmute. So the next policy is 460, the Local Control Accountability Plan. This policy is current, so there's no recommended changes. Both there are any questions? Raising Zoom hands. I don't see any. So the next is Board Policy 500, Accountability. And again, it's current. There's no recommended changes. Zoom hands. And so this will take us to the series, the 1,000, the Community Relationships. Relationships. And Victoria, speaking of, is there anyone wishing to speak? On the Review and Design of Board Policies 1,000 Series this morning.
There are no hands raised.
Thank you so much. So then we will jump into BP 1,002, Release of People's Directory Information. And this is proposed for review for deletion, which is covered in BP 5125 and 5125.1. But if there are any questions, raise your Zoom hand and unmute. See any? Okay. So this brings us to 1,006. This is the Local Claims Procedure pursuant to Government Code, Section 935. This is proposed review for deletion and add BP 3320. Mark, go ahead.
Yes, I noticed this, there's the, the note at the top says, "Proposed Delete and Review Board Policy 3320." This policy is to add types of claims into the district's own local policy that are not in the government code. And I think, and I reviewed in current, 3320 doesn't do that. So this is going to be deleted, I think, and incorporated in 3320. I think the language should go with it. In other words, if the, if, if the suggestion was delete it because we don't need it, we just, we'll just use 3320. I'm just pointing out that they're different. But I do think it makes sense to have all of it in one policy.
So we would take this language, Victoria can note that we'll take all of this language and make sure it's incorporated in 3320.
Correct.
We might already have that in the notes on 3320, but we'll make sure we'll put it in this notes as a living document. Thank you for that.
President Norman, and on these where we're skipping a series meeting, like this is coming up in the thousands, but we're not moving on to the 3,000s till a future meeting. It's a little tricky on how to do them, right? If they're crossing over some of our meetings.
I agree. I think when we, when we, we'll have to discuss when we bring them forward for first read, the ones that we are just reviewing, so we have a comprehensive view. We'll have to discuss whether we have to bring those back or not because we're not doing anything with them. And then that would allow us to put in the first read these overlaps to make sure we cover overlaps and stuff like that. Because we're trying to get through all this in the summer. So that when we bring them back to, you know, regular meeting in the fall, and into the winter, maybe, that we can, we can note to make sure that we see that. So we can confirm that we moved it and stuff like that.
Yeah, because like, for example, on deleting the prior one, 1002, replacing it with the existing, I think it was actually an administrative reg. It'd be nice to look at those together. Like, I don't see any problem with this if it's already duplicated in a, in a 5,000 series, but it's nice to have them together. So.
I agree with.
Okay, all right, thanks.
I think it's just a way to figure out how to read through all of them and let the public also, that all stakeholders see it, that, right? With the read through in order. I agree. And that brings us to BP 1,009, Cibility. And again, this one is proposed review for deletion and replace it with CSBA's BP 1313, which is stability. So, and again, we can, we'll see that one in just a few minutes when we get down to it. And Victoria, can you try and, real quick, you do, when we have deletion and replacement, if I recall, probably, you usually have those back to back when we're reviewing them at first read, so that we can.
Yes.
Okay, I see no questions. So BP 1020, this is Jason?
Just simply as it states in the, the back.
Just simply as it states in the, the backup, this is just a, no longer exists in CSBA. There is no, there's no longer a policy. So we don't have a recommendation for the policy, so we're simply bringing it for review.
How does this policy look? What does it look like in action? Or is this really part of what we're moving towards with equity? What is it?
It seems to me that this is kind of, previously was a little bit of a, of a catchall. I don't know, you know, when you look at the education code references, it seems kind of odd references regarding, you know, student records. And so it doesn't seem as though it's really a policy based in legal ed code necessarily, as much as it's kind of a philosophical statement. But I think it's, honestly, I think it's covered just in other policies and just other ways which the board, which is the, for us to function as an organization. So, no, it, again, I, it's hard because it seems like it is a, very much a, a collect all. It references all sorts of different topics, whether it's eligibility of services to resource allocation to formal instructions for governance teams. So it's, it, it's kind of an odd mixture of topics. I don't know the basis for when this was approved and for what reasonings. But like I said, it, it no longer, it doesn't exist in, in CSBA. So my view is when traditionally the CSBA, what I've seen is when CSBA has a policy or policies that cover old policies throughout, they move for deletion, so there's not redundancies in policy.
And I did find, before I go, I did find an appendix where CSBA did talk about services kind of as a catchall when they're, when they're beginning, there's some law change. So I see Mark's hand up and says, speaking of that. Here for lawyer first.
Yeah, I just wanted to chime in briefly. I agree with Jason. When I was reviewing these, I looked at the, the legal references. There's really no connection between the legal references and this. And anecdotally, for what it's worth, in, in 25 years, no issue has landed on my desk that has prompted me to end up looking at CSBA's policy on youth services. So I think it, that, that to me explains why CSBA is no longer maintaining this policy. Covered in another.
Other, as I was gonna say, I looked at the legal references that they were covered in other policies. And so I felt like the legal side of it was covered. I felt the equity that it's trying to express in there, we're expressing with equity. And I see Jan's hand raised. Sorry, Jan, go ahead.
Well, I just was also agreeing with Jason. This is, was adopted eight years ago. And, you know, it's grown by leaps and bounds as far as the specificity, which we had addressed services to students. So it seems that it is a catchall. And then we've gone far beyond that. I'm assuming that's why CSBA has dropped it, because it's covered elsewhere.
And we're at four.
Okay. Was that in the appendix? It's pretty much said that, Jan. Thank you. You lower your hand and then we will move on. And to clarification on that, but it is to delete that. So, if you want to make a note. And then BP 1100, Jason.
Again, there's several, as, as probably the board members noticed, there are several new policies that we do not have, and this is one of them. So this is for board review and discussion or adoption.
And this is communication with public. And go ahead.
I just wanted to suggest that we review this against our 9000s, because there is a couple things in here in terms of meeting with reporters or, you know, I mean, it comes up again in media relations, but we cover some of these on the board side of things in the 9000s. So I just wanted fellow board members to compare and contrast the 9000s. But I didn't have any other comments. I thought it was a good policy.
I agree with that. Do you have any hands? Okay, so we'll move it back, move it on for first read. And so that brings us to our next policy, 1112, Jason.
Again, same, this is a policy that we do not have. And we're just bringing it forward for board consideration and reviews. A lot of what we already do and much of it in, in law as well, regarding, you know, access to school premises, et cetera. So just wanted to provide this as for board review, specific to interviewing and photographing students. I think that's one that is important. Oftentimes, we get a lot of questions about that, so.
I agree. Mark, your hand, go ahead.
That specific section is also directly related to an attorney general opinion on that, on that subject, that you're limited in your ability to prevent students from talking to the media and vice versa.
Jason, can we actually give out somebody's phone number or address to the media if asked? It seems like we could, right? So, or Mark, is that what, is that what is it saying, this policy?
Yeah, that, that actually reminded me of another note I had on this, is that your current policy on providing directory information doesn't include the, the news media as among the list of individuals and entities that directory information goes to on request. So we'll need to make sure that that is consistent. If the, if the policy is going to be to provide the information to the news media, which is common, it should be in the annual notice to parents that is required and that they can opt out of, so that there's consistency there.
Nice catch, Mark.
And President Norman, and the only other thing that I had noted on 1112, which we're still on, is our board protocols in terms of speaking with the media. Let me see if I can find it here. It says, okay, under the media contacts paragraph, where it starts, other board members and/or staff, that last sentence, may be asked by the superintendent or designate. I think either our board policy in the 9000s or protocol indicates that you as board president can also designate somebody. So we might want to make that consistent, meaning board president is the de facto media spokesperson, but you could also designate another board member. So we might want to tighten that up if other members agree.
Agreed. Jan, your hands raised?
Yes, I have a question for Mark. In the past, like, if school power wanted to publish student pictures, that they needed to make sure that they had clearance on that, does that no longer exist? Or is something like that still in effect?
That, that's, it, it's really one of those, it depends situations. If, if students are in a public setting and a picture is taken of them in a public setting, then that's different. There, there's really no expectation of privacy in that. Whereas if they're, you know, in a classroom, for example, and there's something going to be put in, there's, they'd be cautious approaches to get permission from parents for the publication of the, the picture of the student. So it's really dependent.
So it would, it would accommodate the parents that have opted out of that? Okay.
Yeah, a lot of districts do with their annual packet of information to parents. They have something in that that allows a parent to say, I don't want any picture of my child in any district publication website, et cetera, regardless of where the photo is taken. So there's, and I see Jason shaking his head. It sounds like the district already does exactly that.
Yes, yeah. We're very, very strict around that. Just going back, circling back to a comment that was made around just public statements. Just the board policy, board bylaw 9010 talks about public statements and it states, when speaking for the district, the, I'm sorry, all public statements authorized to be made on behalf of the board shall be made by the board president, or if appropriate, by the superintendent or other designated representative. I think just reviewing the, the media relations, I think it is caught up in there that it's not, it doesn't mention board, the board president giving that right to another board member. So just for bright clarity, because I think there was a question or two that it stated that, you know, the board president could defer it to another board member. It actually, it doesn't state that. It's either the board president, the superintendent, or designated, which is what would be designate.
Right, like our information, public information officer.
Correct.
So the language is then clear between the two policies?
Correct.
There's nothing contradictory?
Nothing contradictory.
Thank you for looking at that. Okay, so I think it's great to have this policy. I think we're all in agreement with that. So the next one is board policy 1113. Jason.
Thank you. One second, I got kicked out.
Okay, so it's in the school website. I'll kick you off and then. Proposed to delete LBSD's current policy or review and discuss CSBA's policy as a replacement? I just don't have the policy number that would be the replacement. That they we did it.
It's the same number.
Yeah. It's just a complete.
They just redid and reconfigured the policy, so it's easier to replace with their current policy.
So if you look in the back, yeah, instead of redlining, we, so one of the things that we recognize and Victoria's really good at this, we recognize that sometimes trying to redline a policy and just show all these little changes, it's much easier just to say, let's just delete this whole thing and, and bring forward a completely new version. And that's what's in the board packet, is a complete deletion of 113, the old one, and replacement of a newer, the newer version, so.
That's why when I thought I deleted the number, okay.
Carol, I have a question for Mark. I'm just gonna ask it in the essence of time. The, I thought I saw a date on here that didn't seem like bleeding edge new. And it seems like websites have all this new litigation around accessibility futures. Is that, it's just a legal question to make sure that CSBA is absolutely up to date on the accessibility futures that we're required to have on our website? Or worth a peek, maybe?
I didn't review it specifically for that. The, because you're right, that has been a hot button topic in, in recent years. So we'll, we'll take a look at that. I think it needs to be bolstered with more specific language. Then we can do that. There, there is a reference to ADA and 504.
Yeah.
Features to ensure accessibility. And it's probably sufficient, CSBA policies typically are sufficient, but we'll, we'll double check that.
Great, thanks.
And if there's a change, it'll come in the first reading. And with that, I don't see other hands raised, we're gonna move on to board policy 114, which is district sponsored social media. Jason.
Again, just bringing it forward, I think, looking at the notes on this one, because there's so many policies. We're current, is my understanding, is that correct, Victoria?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I noted that incorrectly. Yes, okay, we're current. And so I don't see a hands raised. We'll go on to the next one, which is board policy 1150. And Jason, this is yours.
All right. Again, this is simply, you know, potential proposal. We do this and the board does provide recognitions. And we just simply are bringing this, whether you want to have one or not, it's really your decision. It's not, this wouldn't preclude us from bringing forward and recognizing students and communities, et cetera, that work on behalf of the school district, so.
Kelly? I thought if we're gonna have this policy, we should add students and staff. Because I know, for example, we awarded and recognized our student board members. And it, that first sentence just says that we're gonna recognize and commend parents, community members, businesses and organizations for contributions, but it seems like.
I, I think the intent is that this falls in the community relations, so it's the 1000. So it's not referencing students necessarily, or it's really referencing the intent. Of CSBA's intent is that this is community specific, so it's 1000. So it's really about potential organizations that work with the school district, not specifically the students or parents that serve the school district.
Nice. Yeah, because I was like, where is that, where are the students?
Yeah, so it's more, it's more around, for example, you know, presenting an award to the community coalition, recognizing them or school power, the school connected organization, PTA. Recognizing Rotary, we've done that before. It's really around those groups, and so that's what this is, is specific to. It's just that a policy related to the fact that the board may at times, you know, recognize other, you know, groups and/or, you know, parents or guardians that might be going above and beyond, booster organizations, et cetera, so.
Gotcha. Okay, that makes sense.
Do you go ahead?
I, I just wanted a little bit more clarification on if a student or community member recommended an individual or organization for board recommend, recognition to the superintendent. Do they just put a name to you, or how does that work?
Well, this is a brand new policy, so we don't, we don't have a structure around this. That's why we're bringing it forward for your consideration.
Okay, we don't have one of those little forms on our, to fill out on our website. Okay.
Yep, definitely.
Would we, maybe to member Perry's and Dr. Valoria's comment, would, we want to add something to our policy about how it's determined if somebody does get awarded, maybe. It, I think right now it just says they submit to the superintendent and designate the name of the individual organization, you know. Where the, the award.
Done in the regulations and around it. But Jason, are you?
Yeah, I mean, they would submit it to, to obviously, to, to me and/or, you know, to now Dr. Spassard. And we would review it and would bring it forward to the board for consideration at a board meeting, obviously, because that's the board. This is your policy, so we do recognitions at the board meeting. And so that would be in conjunction with the board president.
Looks like we want to bring it back then, for first read. As us on to board policy 1160, political process, Jason.
60, this is, I don't believe we have this policy. This is a new one for us for consideration. It oftentimes, again, we get questions regarding the ability for staff to be involved in potential measures and candidacies, et cetera. This just provides clarity around the process.
Now, Jason, is this, is this staff related, or is this kind of, is it called under community relations? Is this the overarching, bigger?
This overarching, bigger. So it would be more around the board's involvement in advocacy and to what degree that the board as a whole would engage in political activity. So for example, bond, the, the reference they often provide, and Mark maybe can speak to it, is around, you know, bond measures in particular, how the oftentimes the bond measures are on behalf of the school district. So how you go about publicizing that information and creating a clear line between, you know, what's appropriate, what's not.
Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, you see a lot of legal references in here, particularly education code section 7054, which is the often.
legal references in here, and particularly education code section 7054, which is the often fine line districts need to walk when they want to provide information on a ballot measure or adopt a resolution regarding ballot measure, there are certain parameters in Ed Code 7050 through 7058 around that. And this is really just a description of what those legal parameters are.
And is this something that we think that we have a need for? And Jan might know best on the, the bond side and stuff, is something that we need to have in place?
May I say something? As an employee fields a lot of these questions, when issues come up, I would value this policy.
Yeah, I think President Norman, and it covers ballot measures, but also has a fair amount of language that applies to candidates. Having been a recent candidate, I appreciated that as well. And it has, the last paragraph talks about legislative advocacy, which I know as board members is part of one of our roles. So it gives some guiding language to that as well. So I was in support of this policy, didn't have any issues with the language.
And I would agree with Victoria's take on it, I think it's good to have it in place to address these questions, because there are very specific rules and regulations to follow.
Right. I think we're just, as we're going through the policies ahead of time, looking at them, I just want to make sure we're not bringing stuff forward we don't need, right, that doesn't apply to us. Like, tell them this one, if you guys are for this or not, that's what I was asking. This moves us on to board policy 1230, it's school connected organizations. L B S D is current, so there's no recommended changes, but in case there's a question, we have Mark present. See any hands? So the next one is board policy 1240, volunteer assistant. Again, we are current on this one, no recommended changes. For zoom hands. Okay, brings us to the next policy, board policy 1250, which is visitors, which we are also current on, and there are no recommendations for changes. Next one is board policy 1260, educational foundation. L B S D is current on that, and there are no recommended changes on this one either. And the next one's board policy 1312.1, complaints concerning district employees, we are current on this one, and there are no recommended changes. Next one's board policy 1312.2, complaints concerning instructional materials. L B S, L B S D's policy is current on this, and there are no recommended changes. And this next one is board policy 1312.3, and Jason, this is you, uniform complaint procedures.
Yes, this one, as you probably all have recalled, this one seems to be updated almost every year, if not every, you know, every other year, for sure. This is simply a, really a formatting. U C P is the uniform complaint process is pretty straightforward. C S B A provided an update in, in December that really just kind of cleaned up all the previous updates and provided what we believe is a better clarity as to the process. You know, what is subject to a U C P, and then what are non-U C P complaints? And, and then obviously updated legal references, so which there are many, and that's simply because uniform complaint falls under many categories. So.
Finders and finders of legal.
Right, there's a lot, lot here, so, yeah, so simply really an, an update to provide just cleanup on that, but versus again, instead of going back and forth regarding, you know, redlining here and there, it's just more of an opportunity to replace it with the, the clean version at this point.
I'm in agreement, Jan?
Yeah, did we review this just this last spring? And at that time, we didn't consider the, their revision from December.
Correct.
We had started revisions long prior, and then COVID hit, and we were in the midst of many other things.
Right, got it, and I know it, Jason's correct, this is a continual one that comes up for revision.
Yes, it was adopted in 2013, and since then, I think there's been probably close to five or six revisions since that time, if not more, so. Yeah, it's been, it's been a recent trend in Sacramento to adopt legislation that adds topics to the uniform complaint procedures, which I think is a good thing to have local complaint procedures rather than lawsuits, but that's one of the reasons why it's been amended so much recently.
Thank you for that, Mark. I don't see any hands up or other comments, so we can move on to the next policy. And we obviously have plenty of time to review these again for first reading. Next policy, V P 1312.4, Jason, this is you, Williams Uniform Complaint Procedures.
Again, this is something, it no longer exists in C S B A policy. So it was just a review, and I'm not sure, maybe Mark can speak to why Williams Uniform Complaint Procedures are no longer part of C S B A. I, I don't have any detail on that. Yeah, I don't know, I, I, that's a really good question. I mean, I, there hasn't been, to my knowledge, any repeal of the, the code provisions requiring, you know, these specific kinds of uniform complaints arising, arising out of the Williams litigation years ago. It's another thing I can look into. Yeah, I wasn't sure if it just fell under, if they were putting it under the new, if you look at uniform complaints, hold on, going back to uniform complaint. But I think I'm wondering if it falls under the, the U C P at the very bottom for non-U C P complaints. And if it's, if they just covered it in there, so now you don't have. I don't. It, it references it there and on U C, U C P complaints, going, sorry, going back to 1312.3 at the very end. It references it, and then it references the administrative regulation that goes along with the uniform or Williams Uniform Complaint. So I don't know if that's why C S B A did that, again, I can't speak to why they moved things around, but I know it gets covered in, in the U C P because it references it there, but I don't have any details on that. That, that must be it, because you need to have, and then A R would not be on this list, but you need to have a Williams Complaint Procedure. I'm going to a board meeting tonight, and I was reviewing the agenda, and you see the quarterly reports of Williams Uniform Complaints, which are usually zero, but that's still a legal requirement, so that is, that is putting these pieces together, that's probably the explanation for it. Is that C S B A said, we don't think we need a separate policy on it, but you need to still have the regulation. Right. And this is part of the annual notices that go out too, there's that requirement. So parents are notified at the beginning of, of the year of both uniform complaints and Williams Uniform Complaint Procedures.
But that was gonna be my question, if we, if we deleted the policy, we keep the A R, A R is referenced in the policy above, and then we are still following the law, that was, that was all just answered, and then it was, remember, or Jan, and then O B D.
Well, they just changed some of their reference numbers on Ed Code, that's all, and, and the, they do have a different, well, they have a C C R for the Williams Uniform Complaint Procedures, but then under the previous one, the okay, 46, anyway, changing it to instructional time, I think. So it just has a different title, but they still have that reference. So I imagine that's, it's just a matter of changing around the, so maybe some of the titles of the codes. Maybe Mark, oh, yeah, complaints concerning deficiencies in instructional materials and facilities is what they title it, instead of under the same Ed Code number. If that makes any difference, it seems like it's all covered.
Right, the reorganization of.
Well, I'm just thinking that I'm, Mark can maybe research this and answer that if C S B A incorporated it into the uniform complaint, they didn't feel that a separate Williams policy was necessary.
Right, four.
Okay, and Mark, if you could bring that back, it let us know before first read, and then I just went on our D's hands up real quick.
I was just gonna say, yeah, I appreciate some more clarification on this.
Okay, so before first read, we'll get that, or part of the package for that, we'll get that information before we suggest this being deleted. And with that agreement, we're gonna move to board policy 1313, which is civility, and Jason?
Again, as mentioned previously, this civility policy would replace 1009. Which is our old civility policy.
Right. And partly to align the ordering, so it matches C S B A's.
Correct.
President Norman, and is this C S B A's policy? Is this their stock policy, or is this our policy?
This is theirs, this is C S B A's.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to reconfirm, I'll just make one brief comment. I am watching a lot of prior board meetings, even, you know, going back through the COVID crisis. I witnessed a lot of uncivil behavior that had to be called out by the board, that I don't think this policy would address that well. It just basically says the board and the district shall model civil, civil behavior, but it didn't really talk about when a member of the community is acting in an uncivil manner, what to do or how to handle that. So I don't have a recommendation, I just, when I read through it, it was a great policy, but I thought maybe it missed a little bit of that aspect, so I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Mark, go ahead.
Yeah, just quickly, another fine line here, that civility at a board meeting is harder to regulate than civility in the main office of one of your schools. Or in a meeting and, you know, a public event at one of your schools or things like that. And, and I think that's why the C S B A's model civility policy doesn't reference board meetings specifically. Because those are First Amendment limited open forum meetings where there's, there's less ability to, to regulate it. I think you can certainly call people out and say that, you know, we expect civility in, in everything, including board meetings. But the, what you can do about it is different depending on the setting. Correct, and we, we have civility letters that we work on if necessary. Unfortunately, we, we have had to send them in the past to different folks, but this unrelated to a board meeting, this is more around, you know, behavior in the front offices, as Mark mentions, or potentially at a sporting event or some sort of other activity that schools sponsor, where we've had to address, you know, behaviors of adults.
And, and this doesn't take away, I guess this is legally what, this, but the fact that this is the stock C S B A, Jason, this isn't prohibiting you from doing that or other things that have been needed. Say in a heated sports game or something by, you know, the adults.
Correct.
Okay, okay, and then Jan?
Well, just anything to do with board meetings, and of course clearly on target as far you know, the meeting what said to officials and also criticisms of employees which changed. I know Mark remembers when it used to be more restricted, but that would to me be more anything in the 9000s. If we would just have any kind of philosophical statement of expecting a certain level of decorum in interactions at a board meeting. But on this, just as you see, our policy originally adopted in 2005, we were having some issues in the district. It kind of covered all sides, and it would even cover things as far as parent conferences. And we had some teacher concerns about how they would be concerned with the behavior of a parent who came into a one-on-one conference about their student. And on the flip side, we also had some staff members that were not responding well to parents and or students, so that really generated this, it really is directed toward those arenas and not to board meetings. Thank you.
And during, during that time, too, the civility was, there's also some parent, parent conflicts that were happening again, for the events and other places, even a drop off and pickup, and so it's kind of addressed that. To address as well. Okay, so with that, we're gonna move, with that agreement, we're gonna move forward on that, and the next policy is V P 1325. And it's advertising and promotion, and Jason, it's yours.
Yeah, it's just some cleanup language, it adds a couple of different approval criteria. Again, it's, it's about distribution of materials and advertisement, so we will not accept for distribution. You know, the, the traditional lewd obscene, et cetera. Also positioning that positions a district on the side of a controversial issue. Or, you know, promote during the school day, which is required by law, that promotes school day, any food or beverage that does not comply with the state nutritional standards, so. That, those are the new, new additions there for your consideration.
Jason, what's this infrequent school fundraising events? Those are allowed to be, if they're infrequent, it's okay if they're not meeting the nutritional standards?
Yeah, so for example, it's larger districts, you might have a a food fair, for example, that happens, and that is serving non-compliant food that you're allowed to, you know, promote at that point in time, but that is limited, right?
Could that be like M U N's cultural celebration once a year, when, when they do something like that?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, usually it's correct, it's usually in conjunction with club fairs, for example, you know, speaking on my, on when I was a principal, we had a club fair, and it was a food fair, and so every club provided food at lunchtime to sell as a fundraiser and behalf, you know, and it was clearly food or beverages that did not meet the nutritional standards, so.
Jan has her hand.
You're muted, Jan.
Would that also cover when they have the groups outside at a, at a play, and they're out there, boosters are selling food? Then it's non-compliant, would that fall under this also as infrequent?
Yeah, it would, but at the same time, it, it does kind of mention during the school day, there are some opportunities outside of a school day. So once the instructional day is over, and that's the true definition of instructional day. So you're, you are allowed to serve foods that do not meet that requirement, once the day is over, right? So it's really more specific to events that are happening within the, the confines of the actual instructional day. Because, you know, if you go to a football game, for example, at a, at a, or basketball game, or softball, whatever, and they have a snack bar, and it's outside of the school day, they're allowed to actually serve beverages that don't comply. So I did notice that on H, Victoria, the third sentence of H, it says discounted fogs instead of foods.
So Jason, this would be like pizza as a recognition that doesn't meet the standards during the school day for rewards would be maybe out of compliance, but pizza sold during a booster after school hours would be fine.
Right, but circling back to, this is about advertising, right? So if you were to advertise, as you mentioned, pizza as a reward, say P T A was going to provide it, and we were gonna push out some sort of, you know, reward incentive program, that's when you would, you would have, we could allow it, obviously, under the criteria potentially, but we would have to, you know, it has to be very infrequent, right?
Gotcha, yeah, okay, gotcha, and then one other question, is there, I thought there was something with a Gotcha, yeah, okay, gotcha, and then one other question, is there, I thought there was something with a timeframe on the length of advertising, like for example, hanging a promotional banner, or something to that effect, is that in this policy, is that an AR? Or is that something totally unrelated?
I think it's in the AR, but I can double check.
Jeff, do you recall where that's located?
I also think, I believe it's the AR, but I have to double check.
Okay, just like with the length of time that you can, even if it's approved, that you can be advertising on school grounds, can ASO have their banner up for nine months, or is it only 30 days, or?
Yeah, we have those specifics listed with the timeline, and even the banner sizes, depending on where they're located.
Gotcha, okay, great, thank you.
Okay, thank you, so with that agreement, we'll bring it back to first read, and this moves us to board policy thirteen thirty, which is use of school facilities and grounds, and LBSD's policy current, so there's no recommended changes. While we all have Mark here, if anyone has a question.
President Norman, I just wanted an example of some of the, wait, are they, are we on joint use, is this thirteen thirty?
Yeah, we're on, not point one, just thirteen thirty, use of school facilities and grounds.
Okay, could you guys just give me an example of a joint use agreement we have, is this what we have with the, with the pool? Or is this not the right one?
This is the next, that's the next one.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay.
But an example on, on use of facilities and grounds, Jeff, can you provide an example of somebody who uses our facilities for a fee?
True thing, so if it's an outside user group, for example, that wants to rent our facility, so as long as they're available for use, we would use our facility use program, and that would include our field spaces, our gymnasiums, our theaters, even classrooms, depending on the function that they're requesting the facility for. It could be a variety of different groups, it could be local youth groups, at which case is if there are students, it's not if there's no charge. If it's a local nonprofit, it'd be very minimal charge, it's only the cost that we incur for supporting the event or hosting, and then there's a different for-profit rate, and those rates are brought to the board about every other year is updated for approval prior to implementing them for the facility use program.
That's great, Jeff, and then we have a priority order, like the ones that are most impacting to our students, get higher priority than, okay, is that in the policy, the priority, or is that a code?
It is required by a code as well, but it is students get priority, then local community youth, then nonprofits, and then for-profit.
Okay, and when we bring it to the board every other year, do we look at surrounding rates, I guess, like to increase or to decrease rates to be in line with the rest of the region?
Informally, we do, however, the rates are based on our actual costs, we look at our utility cost and maintenance costs of the facilities that we're using, it's a template provided by the state that we use to update, so while we do look at their costs, it's really irrelevant to how we calculate what our fees will be.
Gotcha, okay, great, thanks.
Like, go ahead, Dee.
And so, if we are lucky enough to get an intramural program at Thurston, after school, that would have priority over, you know, club team or something else that's using the facilities?
Yeah, that would be, because that's a district-sponsored activity, so it's similar to, you know, if we were providing the track and field to, for an organization to utilize, yet we have track and field kids on there, our kids get priority, and then any available dates beyond that would go towards what, as Jeff mentioned, through that priority, through those tiers.
Okay, great.
It's like we're in agreement, we're moving on to the next policy, which is BP thirteen thirty point one, joint use agreement, Jason, this is you.
I'll have Jeff introduce it.
Here, thank you. And this has to do with our joint use agreements, and Clerk Osborne, to address your question, what would be an example of that? You're exactly right, our joint use agreement with the city, which includes our field spaces and gymnasiums to support their activities, but like the facility use, our students have top priority for all of our, our facilities that we have.
Any other questions on this one? Okay, with that agreement, we're gonna move on to the next policy, BP thirteen forty, access to district records. LBSD's policy is current, there's no recommended changes, if you have questions, raise your hand. Okay, so the next one is BP fourteen hundred. Jason, this is yours, relations between other governmental agencies and the schools.
Well, if you think back to earlier, we were talking about a policy that referenced kind of youth services, for example, if you look at some of the language in that youth services policy, and you look at this policy, it references our relationships between other entities and ourselves, and so we bring it forward for board consideration. We do this, you know, if you think about all the opportunities that we engage with outside agencies, other government agencies in our schools. So just recognizing that, in my opinion.
Seems like a cleaner policy than the youth services one, because it's talking specifically about these governmental agencies without kind of muddying in a bunch of other topics.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, with that agreement, we're moving on to the next policy, which is BP seventeen hundred, relations between private industry and the schools, and Jason, this is you.
And again, this is just providing some clarity around, you know, the, the school district and schools, and how we interact with private industry, so just for your consideration, I think it provides some clarity for us moving forward, for the board to, you know, to staff, so.
I don't see any hands raised. Again, you know, we can make comments, can we email to Victoria before first read, if there's changes, just some changes that we can all consider then?
Um, President Norman, on this one and the prior one, so fourteen hundred and seventeen hundred, just for everybody to consider, the last sentence of each talks about kind of like a regular update on governmental agencies that the district is working, and then the same one on this private industry talks about kind of regularly reporting to the board on establishing and sustaining these partnerships. So, you know, that seems, that seems appealing, just so we have a holistic and top-level view of some of the industry and governmental partnerships, but I would just want to make sure that, that's something that everybody has the time to do.
We typically provide a lot of this in weekly updates, so for example, you know, when, and, and our potential contracts that come forward to the board for approval. So when we had student artwork, for example, at one of our local art galleries being displayed, you know, that's a relationship between private industry, because it was a, it was a private, you see, art gallery and, and the school in that instance, so we bring forward, many of these will be typically just brought forward, not as like a, just a general annual report that we provide to the board, but in an ongoing fashion, because it happens, sometimes it could be simply one event, or a couple of events that might happen at a certain time, and then we would provide a weekly update, not necessarily, you know, as a general board update out of board meeting.
Okay, that makes sense, maybe something to consider for the communications plan, you know, on what some of those partnerships are, I know that's, that multi-year one's kind of underway, but that would be another nice place to kind of doc, document it. Sorry, Jan, go ahead.
Carol?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Jason, I just wondering in this remark also, whether we need to make any cross-referencing on anyone that volunteers or donates the products, or has purchases advertising, that they would need to comply with those various policies that address what's allowed in our district?
Are you referencing advertisements, that type of thing?
Well, it just says also private industry volunteering in the classroom, providing special instructional programs or assemblies, and then it's donating products, instructional materials, purchasing advertisements, so covers all of those, but we have standards for that, for, you know, currently in policy, whether we should just cross-reference those policies in this, they would also need to comply with those.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah, we can, we can work on that.
And I just wanted to protect, like, say, say a teacher brings someone into lecture to the class, and all of a sudden it goes sideways, that they would know, you know, what kind of questions they should ask prior to having a, a person from private industry come in to know, you know, what some of the parameters are, what they might present.
Right, right, I think it, it mentions it, but it's probably not as clear as we could, so we can look at, maybe provide some clarity, cross-reference.
Well, I, I guess I didn't pick up on it, so.
I only see it in, in the advertisements piece, you know, in accordance with board policy.
Right, right, but I'm more concerned.
But it's not so much in, as you mentioned, number one, where, you know, if you're providing us, if you're volunteering time to be part of a speaking engagement, and, you know, it's not contractual, how do we, what's the fallback if that person steps out of line, that we would be able to reference, you know, in accordance with, you know, law and board policies, you know, regarding appropriate behavior in the classroom type of thing.
Thank you.
And I, and I think that the cross-referencing of policies will become easier once all these are cleaned up, I know Victoria's head might have just exploded.
Yeah.
But easier, easier, I'm not saying it's an easy task, easier with them all being clean, right, not, not easy, I'm not saying easy at all. And so this does, it brings us to the 2000s administration, before we get a public comment, everything else, I thought we could just take a quick three-minute break and come back at ten twenty-five. See you guys at ten twenty-five.
Carol?
Yeah.
While we're waiting, I just wanted to put on your notes, if we could go back, if we have time, to one 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 four on social media, if we end up with some extra time, I had another thought.
Awesome. Um. So the this starts us in 2000s, we are, it's ten twenty-eight, and we are re-adjourned. Housekeeping here, so Victoria, is there anyone wishing to speak on the review and discussions of board policies in the 2000s series this morning?
There are no hands raised.
Okay, so the 2000s series, as with my policies that address employment, like bargaining contracts, LBS, LBSD's norms in the past been to not have corresponding policies, now that small district having additional needs for maintenance of both sets of living documents is a cost issue, however, if you're attending a CSBA president workshop, it's recommended that our unique community might benefit from these policies, and at least review them, even though most of what's in these policies are covered in the superintendent's contract, but I thought we'd jump in and review them, or at least clarity sake, so the first one is BP two thousand, its concepts and roles. You guys have all read this. If you have any questions, just raise your hand, jump in. While you guys are looking at that, I'm just gonna ask Mark a quick question here on, for clarity. Mark, on, Jim isn't here, so all five members aren't here, I know Quorum is here, so we're fine, but on the policies that we're not taking any action with, they're current, they're good as they are, there wasn't any comment, do we have to bring those back to first read, or do we just, there are no comments, so we don't move them forward? We're abiding.
You don't, I mean, I, I haven't looked at your board bylaw specifically on policy and, uh, policy amendments, I think you have one, but if, if there's no recommended change to a policy, I don't think it needs to come back, it's only four amendments.
Okay, can you look at that while we're going through, and then you can let me know at the end, so we, so we can make sure we have clarification, so. I appreciate that. Okay, and it looks like we're all in agreement with concept and roles. So that's gonna take us to BP two one one zero, and that's superintendent responsibilities and duties. And that's superintendent responsibilities and duties. And I'm not seeing any hands raised or questions. Fan, do you have, go ahead, Jan.
I just had one, um, it's not just in this one, it's in some other ones also. On the first paragraph, second sentence, I don't know that we need the word also. If we could just have the board desires, I don't know that we need to always use the word also when we have a second sentence. It's not a big deal, it just seems like it's.
I'm fine with that.
Also is an overused word, that's all.
I like people who can write precisely.
It's actually in the third paragraph again.
And, um, Victoria, if it's in the two thousands, we, I mean, yeah, in BP two thousand, will you um, change that there as well? Okay, so it looks like outside of, um, making, Jan's comments and making these more concise, looks like we can move on to BP two-one-one-zero, superintendent's responsibilities and duties. Nope, sorry, we just did that one. Uh, BP two-one-one-one, superintendent's governance standards. Okay, I don't see any hands raised on this, so I'm gonna take that as agreement, we're gonna move this back, we're gonna move this first read. Um, this brings us to board policy twenty-one-twenty, superintendent's recruitment and selection. I know three of us have, have this process and this seem aligned with our process.
President Normandin, could you just repeat that for clarity? What did, what did you say?
I said, three of the board members have gone through the test, and it seems like this is, um, process that we went through and hired, uh, Jason.
Okay, the, this policy aligns with our current practice.
That we'll move on to board policy twenty-one-twenty-one, superintendent's contract. And Mark, I know, um, you answered for me, but maybe if you could, for all of our, um, all of the board members. But this does align with, I'm trying to hold in place with the superintendent.
Yes. The superintendent contracts have gotten longer and longer over the years because of the addition of these things that have to be in the contract. Um, and that list of, um, what is it, twelve things? Um, at the beginning is a may include, um, so it's not a mandate, it gives you flexibility. Um, and the, the candidate flexibility, um, with regard to these things. But then the, the termination provisions are really dictated by law.
And it does say that shall be reviewed by you.
By your legal counsel, yes, which I'm happy to.
Yeah, you have done.
Yeah.
Okay, I don't see any hands raised, and there's, so sticks with the board policy twenty-one forty, evaluation superintendent. Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, and just a quick, I, I added a sentence at the end of this, a proposed, um, sentence at the end. And then there was an earlier, uh, one superintendent responsibilities and duties also. Um, where added language like consistent with the contract. You, ideally, you want the contract and the policy to be one hundred percent consistent with one another. But a contract is negotiated separately. Um, and so I thought it was important to just clarify, and this is a legal principle that if there's a conflict between a contract and a board policy, then the contract is, um, a higher level of legally binding. Um, uh, a, a legally binding document, so the, the terms of the contract would govern over the policy if there was ever a conflict between the two.
Thank you so much. Which is what the concern is when you have a serious, right, policies is making sure. So thank you for putting that in there. Looks like there are no other hands raised. So with that agreement, we're gonna move to board policy twenty-two-ten. Last one we're reviewing today, and then we will go back up to one-one-one-four. Um, this is administrative discretion regarding board policy. Go ahead, Mark.
Oh, yeah, I, I was gonna raise my hand again and I saw that I never lowered it. Um, yeah, I changed shall to may there, that's just my recommendation that, um, there could be times, uh, a, a lot of times frankly, where a decision is made administratively that's not directly addressed in board policy, that is really not even a board issue. You know, about a, a specific thing at a specific classroom at a specific school. And a policy that says every time this happens, you shall review it at a board meeting, I think, um, you know, stretches you too far. There certainly could be circumstances where you want to do that. Um, because of the significance of the decision and, and, you know, people thinking, hey, maybe we need a policy on this. Or maybe we need to amend policy to address this, but I just don't think, um, the shall schedule a review of the action at the next regular board meeting, that could clog your agendas if you apply that literally.
Well, I think with COVID too, that would have been, if possible, I like the word may better.
Yeah.
That would definitely cause a lesson of that. Jan, go ahead.
Uh, this is really, um, for Mark. In our, the policy that we first did two thousand on concepts and roles. It had the last statement about, uh, if the superintendent delegates. Uh, it does not relieve the superintendent's responsibility. And we've had a lot of questioning of the fact that, um, as board members, we are giving up our responsibility that we must take when we delegate to the superintendent. And so many of these policies, um, there is a superintendent or designee that performs the actual work. Is there anywhere where we could, in any of these policies in the, in the two thousand series, where we could address? Or maybe it would be in the nine thousands, that the board is allowed to delegate to the superintendent. And it, and that we still retain the overall responsibility of making sure that what we have delegated is performed at the standards and to the policies and the legalities. But it just seems that I would, I would like something that you could, in a sense, show to people, explain to people when they feel that we're not doing our job when we do delegate.
Yeah, there, there is an ed code section that kind of, uh, reiterates what you just said, that a board can, um, delegate duties to superintendents, but the board retains ultimate responsibility for the performance of that duty. And that, and that really just means the legal consequences flow to the school district and not the individuals who make the, um, decisions. If, I, I understand your, your question in part to be, is there a provision of bylaws that already addresses this? That could be cross-referenced or, or something like that. And, um, I, in my mind's eye, I'm thinking there is. But we can double-check that.
Okay. I just think there is, and I don't know, this is probably more, it has to do with communication, there seems to be a real misperception that we are supposed to do everything, which, you know, in a sense gets into micromanaging day-to-day operations and, yeah. We don't do that. So, but I think that just when people get upset about something, they, they throw that in our face as if, well, you're not, you're not doing your job, because we elected you to make these decisions.
Yeah, the, the, the general, um, board makes policy, staff implements the policy under the direction of the superintendent, is embedded. Um, not only in, in model, um, in, you know, every model of good governance that I've seen in my career. But also it's reflected in the ed code, where, um, that the authority to delegate, um, another specific provision um, regarding the authority of superintendent with, uh, certain, um, things listed. Some of which are subject to approval of the board, others which are not. Um, so it's embedded in, in law, but you're, you're right, there is often a, uh, a misunderstanding about the degree to which, um, boards and board members are involved in day-to-day operations. And a, uh, assumption that they are when in fact they're not.
Thank you.
I think, and I think that's been shown in the research that CSBA and NSBA work on and part of. In my board president workshop where they, you know, you would wanna bring the two thousand series forward, was to help clarify the best differences, Jan, you're picking up. And so it is, it's not just us, it made me feel better, it's national. Um, and they point out the longevity of board members is what, and, and super, and or superintendent is what helps uh, clear, clear that up in communities. So when there's a lot of motion there. There's more confusion. Thank you. Go ahead, Dee.
Um, I, I agree with Jan. I think putting all these things in our policies, which are in one place online really helps with transparency, even though a lot of the two thousand series is already in the superintendent's contract. It just makes it easier if anybody's looking at that. And I think if Mark finds something that we could put in our nine thousand series that addresses that, even though we all know it and it's in the ed code, I think that would be helpful. Thanks.
I like cross-reference, I do. Okay, so with that, we're gonna move back up to policy one-one-one-four, social media. Now, if any other member has another, we have like ten minutes, so if anyone else has another one they wanna review again. Go ahead, Kelly.
Thanks, Carol. Uh, my question on social media was, um, and I think it's addressed to legal counsel. The, uh, current Supreme case, Supreme Court case regarding the cheerleader, the BL, uh, the levy case. Does our social media policy, I know that was her personal social media, I just wanted to review it with that lens, since that was, um, just out last month. And then, my, my question on this is really regarding the moderation of comments. I think it had a really good, strong sentence that official district social media is gonna have a, you know, a statement about the purpose of that, you know, social media platform. Like, I'm imagining a, a Instagram page or something, right, in the description that says this is the official page for this site and what's expected of people. But we do sometimes run into hot water when we moderate comments. So I, I think I wanted to look at it through that lens. Um, and then also I wanted some clarification on what's considered social media. You know, is Facebook obviously, or Instagram? Um, is Thought Exchange considered social media, because it has a social aspect? Just wanted a little more clarification on this one when it comes back. Um, I don't know if anybody else has questions on that as well. So twofold, one on the BL levy case, and then two on moderation of comments.
Well, I'll start with, uh, just to provide clarity, because I'm not sure Mark is, you know, Thought Exchange is not a social media platform. It's a, it's a survey tool that has terms of use.
Okay.
But that's separate than this. This is, this is specific to social media. This would be Facebook, Instagram.
Okay.
Um, ways by which, you know, we post social media, the, there is no First Amendment right guarantee, um, in, in Thought Exchange. That is not, uh, it is a, um, very specific contract in terms of use, uh, for, uh, for usage, so.
Okay, that helps.
Yeah, and the, um, the BL case that the Supreme Court just recently, uh, decided, didn't, uh, didn't address um, school or school district sponsored, um, social media. It was, it was, you know, limited to the issue of student speech and whether off-campus speech and conduct can be, um, regulated, um, by the schools. So I don't think that there's anything in, in that case that would, um, impact this, this particular policy. Um, on your, your second question about, and it gets, about, um, comments and, and things like that. Um, that can get really, um, tricky, and there have been some lawsuits. There was a lawsuit against Poway Unified in San Diego County, um, for deleting some comments that, uh, some people made on, um, uh, the school district's website, and then on individual board members' uh, social media pages where they deleted some conduct, uh, some content. Um, without getting into it too, uh, too, um, too much, or try not to. There's three levels of First Amendment forums, they call them. There's the traditional public forum, you know, the steps of City Hall where free speech is wide open. There's non-public forums on the other end of the spectrum, like, uh, it's public property, but it's not open for free speech, like a, a classroom at a public school is public property, but it's a non-public forum. The one between the two is a limited public forum. And board meetings are a limited public forum, that's why people are only allowed to comment on things within the jurisdiction of the board. Um, and your social media, I would say, is a limited public forum. And it need, and it can have, um, information and disclaimers that lay that out and that, that, uh, clarify that. In a limited public forum, you can require speakers to limit themselves to the topics uh, that are within the forum. Uh, again, back to the board meeting example, subject matter jurisdiction of the board, that's rather broad. Um, you can limit that, um, and you can regulate speech and comments that are outside of that limited public forum, as long as you don't base it on viewpoint. If two people comment on something that really doesn't relate to, um, what is posted on a school district's social media page. Um, and one of them is deleted, expresses opinion A and it's deleted, and opinion B is left up there. Then you can get into some First Amendment, um, issues. But, um, you can generally not only have seen libelous, incite, clear of the present, uh, uh, danger of unlawful acts or violation of school rules, et cetera. Um, but if comments stray away from the topic of the forum, then that can be regulated as well, as long as it's not based on viewpoint.
I gotcha, that's really helpful, Mark. And maybe, um, because I did see what we could moderate based on those categories of seeing incite students, um, but maybe we need something in the policy about when it strays. I think that's just a suggestion, it seems like.
We can, uh, we can look. We can, we can look at review that, what are we in, 1114?
1114.
Yeah, I'm going, so yeah, shall be used only for their stated purposes in a manner consistent. Yeah, does not intend to create a limited public forum or otherwise guarantee an individual's right to free speech. So that language in the first sentence or the first section under guidelines for content is designed to address that. But there are, again, there are limitations on that, just because you say, we're not, we don't intend to create a public forum. If you allow comments on posts, then the regulation, some might say censorship or allowing some and not others, but the regulation of those comments has to be consistent with the First Amendment, it can't be based on viewpoint. And regardless of the viewpoint, if it crosses certain lines, uses obscenity, is defamatory or something like that, then that's outside of any First Amendment protection. But within that you have some but less authority to regulate. So we can, we can look at that a little bit more and maybe beef that up a little.
Okay.
That, that's first part under guidelines for content.
That's great, thank, thank you very much.
And then, Mark, thinking this through, because you're not at first reads, you're only in the workshops. Now, these ones that we're asking you to look at, we should have to work with Victoria and Jason, we'll have to bring them back in a workshop while you're here, so that you can help us through with those, help us process them. Because you're, you won't be at first read. And then also in my, to clarify the comment I made about letting Victoria know before first read, I really meant like minor things that we could do, anything that's major, we should really bring back into the workshop. But if you send that in, we'll know whether to place the policy back in workshop, then you can keep, you can reflect, or whether to move it to first read. Any other questions about any of these policies? This is amazing timing. Go ahead, Dee. You're being
That. I just wanted to thank you for keeping us on schedule and everybody for getting through all these.
Oh, that all goes to Victoria. The wizard of the board. He says on schedule.
Thanks, Victoria.
My pleasure, you know, I like running things in a tight ship.
You do, and we are so appreciative of it, truly are. Okay, so then this is gonna bring us to 5A, which is the next regular meeting will be Thursday, August 19. And then we'll be hosting the second in the series of special meetings to continue to review board policy between now and our next regular meeting. And hopefully we'll have the third one too. So the second meeting is scheduled for Monday, August 3 at 2. Again, you don't have all the words to share, how grateful of everything Victoria does for the board, to coordinate everything behind the scenes. And then for Victoria and Jason working on all these policies. And then I know that Jeff, Chad and Mike are preparing for the next round, and so appreciate all of the cabinet working on it and all their teams. So with that, can I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Moved. Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, as a reminder, BP 9200 notes, once we adjourn, the board is no longer seated, and thus we have no individual authority to reseat it again. Victoria, can you please conduct a board member roll call?
Member Vickers?
Yes.
Member Perry?
Yes.
We're Gosborne?
Yes.
President Normandin.
Yes. So the motion carries 401, and Mark, I want to just say thank you to you two and all the work you do behind this. So the meeting is adjourned to, the meeting is adjourned at 10:55. Thanks everyone so much.
Bye, thanks.
Thank you, bye guys.